Hey, good evening. I'd like to call to order the work session meeting Tuesday, September 9th, and ask for approval of the agenda.
Like to make your statement or?
I move to approve the agenda as presented and request that all presentations and discussions be conducted respectfully in a man- mindful of evidence.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. So first about the agenda, we have public comment. If you'd like to make public comment, raise your hand, come up to our new podium and state your million dress in my name in under three minutes, kind and respectful ways. Anyone like to make public comment? In the audience? Is there anyone on Zoom? No? Okay, so we'll go right ahead and go onto our discussion items. Bruce, wanna introduce everybody?
Sure.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Yes, um, is it nice?
Yeah.
Is that a problem with, Martin's my neighbor?
Good to be here.
She's your neighbor? Or she gonna tell us stories?
No, I promise you. Be very good.
Yeah, but um, she be talking about the Cajun vaccine, like not a couple of their shirts.
Thank you. Well, thank you for your time. Again, my name is Rebecca Brooklyn, I'm the chief administrator at Providence Seaside Hospital. It is privileged to serve the coast. And what I'd like to share, just in just brief introduction, is a just a reminder for many who don't know that the hospital is owned by the Union Health District, and so it is a health district hospital. I'm pleased to be joined by Tina Montero, who is on the Union Health District Board, but I fully recognize that Providence has been invited in to operate the hospital, which we have enjoyed doing for over forty years, so it is a privilege to serve the community. We have been watching closely the projected impacts from the H R one bill that passed on July the 4th, and we're concerned, we're concerned. When the bill passed, there was quite a bit of community anxiety because there was a fear and a rumor that the hospital might be vulnerable in terms of potential closure. So I'm here to say that that is not the case. That Providence is committed to the North Coast and we are not leaving. In fact, we experienced in 2024 our highest volumes ever in the inpatient setting, in the emergency department, in our clinics. We care for more of our community than we ever have in our past. So we are committed to continuing to serve the coast. But it is true that there are significant impacts coming with the Medicaid bill. So to just share a bit of some background on that, while it is still fluid and many of the stipulations are still changing, what we are anticipating at this point is changes will likely come into effect sort of in two waves. The first being between 2026 and, gosh, I believe it's 2028, and those changes are mostly related to enrollment annoultability. And so this is related to perhaps what you've heard about people needing to qualify for Medicaid based on work requirements. And so that is what we are expecting to happen at the end of next year, in 2026. The second phase of the impacts are likely going to be later, later in 2028 and beyond, and those are going to be impacts that will affect the reimbursement of Medicaid, the reimbursement how providers are reimbursed by Medicaid. Health systems, hospitals are assessed a provider tax. That tax then is pushed up to the federal government, it's matched, and it comes back to Oregon, and it helps fund the Oregon Health Plan, which is Medicaid. And I will share that I have many, I have many people in all sorts of audience who have said, "Oh, I should be fine. I don't have Medicaid. I have the Oregon Health Plan." It is, it is the same, the Oregon Health Plan. So as, as a health system, a large health system, we have eight hospitals in Oregon, we have been trying to assess the impact to us. Again, it is fluid in terms of what we're hearing happen and hearing change, but what we're anticipating at this point could be a $100 million impact next year, in 2026, to the Providence health system. So I do not have that broken down for the Providence Seaside Hospital, but I think all health systems are acknowledging that this is, this will be significant cuts and this will be significant reduction. In talking with Susan Penron, the superintendent up in the seaside, you know, she, she helps really sort of frame this for us, I think, as a community. And nearly half of the kids up at the school are on Medicaid. So this is, this is a real impact to real families, to many of us. So we will need to restructure, we will need to look at the services that we offer. We will need to look at restructuring. We will need to make sure that we can continue to be viable for the community going forward. We will need to partner. And one example of that is in the recent announcement that shared a few weeks ago about closing our maternity services. We will need to partner with Columbia Memorial and the Astoria birth center, and they have both come to the table, and they have been very strong partners for us. And so that's, that's work that we are continuing to do as we look ahead. So at the same time that we are anticipating real challenges coming forward with Medicaid and needing to look very carefully at the services that we're providing, I want you to know also that we have places where we will need to grow and we will need to expand. So I am very happy to share that two weeks ago, we were surveyed by the Oregon Health Authority, and we have received the designation of becoming a trauma center. So that is a very important space for us to show up for our community. I think we all know that intersection of 26 and 101 and the car accidents that are happening there, it is essential for us to be a strong trauma provider in that part of our community. So that is something we're very proud of. We are working on making a public announcement about that. But that is, that's an area we're meeting and we're going to expand. We've restarted our neurology program. This was a program that had had been stopped for four years because of the loss of a provider, but we've just recruited an absolutely outstanding neurologist. So that's another space where we are, we're growing. And we've recently made a significant investment in our cancer center. So I hope that the message for you is a balanced message. It's a message that we're taking the, the anticipated cuts from Medicaid seriously. We are looking at our services. We're making sure that we will be sustainable for the future, and there will be areas we want to continue to grow. So I will open to any questions that you might have, Bethany, this evening.
All right. Question, you said $100 million impact across Providence as a whole. How many hospitals then?
Well, so in Oregon, we have eight hospitals.
Okay.
So we have, um, out in the gorge, the river, we have Medford down in Southern Oregon, and then the other five hospitals are in the Portland area. So eight, and so that is $100 million for that geography. The Providence footprint is across seven states, 51 hospitals. Once you start to talk about the projected impact at that level, it becomes numbers that are as far to even make $100 million as far to. But I don't know.
I want to do, understand the impacts of the Medicaid reduction. And assuming this just means some people are not going to be eligible for Medicaid?
Yes.
Uh, maybe because of the work requirements, but also Medicaid, does Medicaid pay the subsidies for the Oregon Health Plan? And so does that mean we're going to have more people uninsured?
We will have many more people uninsured. Oregon was one state back during the initiation of the Affordable Care Act. Oregon was one state that really moved forward with Medicaid expansion. And so we have a much higher percentage of our population on Medicaid because we did a very. So Oregon will be uniquely impacted related to the cuts.
Okay, everybody.
And the impacts of the reenrollment is one of the challenges today on Medicaid. You have to re-enroll every two years, and now individuals will have to re-enroll every six months. It is going to put a significant burden on this population to work through paperwork to re-enroll. So we do expect there will be a significantly larger percentage uninsured.
You probably all have people in our orbit who are, have health insurance because of the Oregon Health Plan and those subsidies. I'm just wondering, as we, as people lose their health insurance, what kind of impact does that can have on the ER, kind of pressure does that can put on Providence?
We expect that, you know, typically what we find if individuals lose insurance, they don't seek their primary care visits, they aren't following chronic conditions, and so volume in the emergency room tends to increase because those that, that care that's needed happens in the emergency department at the point that it becomes more of a emergent, emergency.
And less likely to be able to pay for that care as well?
And less likely to pay for that care as well.
Thank you.
So. The tax.
Why did those, the beds match, the beds are no longer going to be matching? Is that correct?
What, what we are understanding is they're cutting the match in half. So, and then, and that can also change. That would be a change that would happen in the second phase of the, of the changes with H R one. But what we're understanding is the match that we're doing today would be cut in half.
And the financial requirement to qualify, does that extend to children of the family? I, I'm concerned, I'm concerned about everyone not being there that is on Medicaid, but our youth, like you said, more than half probably of our youth in this county are on Medicaid. Do the children automatically qualify still, or is there a gray line area there?
I should know the answer, and I can follow back up with you on that.
It would, yeah, it would just be hopefully comforting to, hopefully comforting to know that, sorry. Thank you. Very. Concerning, so are there any other questions?
What level trauma center is K S H?
Level four. So the levels go from one to four. Level one would be in Portland, the annual O H S U. That is the highest level of traumas, and then the lower level of trauma is a four. So this means that the medics can stop at us, that allows them to stop. And it also means that we've trained our staff, we have the right supplies, the right equipment, we have a dedicated trauma room, so that we are, we are ready for the traumas that come to us. And frankly, what we found was we were seeing traumas even though we were not a designated trauma center. They weren't coming to us, and so this will ensure that we're providing even better care.
Yes, twelve point minutes shorter drive for, from Canada, for these patients.
And then do you have the chances of becoming like a trauma three or a trauma two or a trauma one?
I think it's very unlikely. We would probably increase. What Columbia Memorial decided to do, they had been a trauma level four, and just this summer, they increased their level to a trauma level three, which is fantastic. There, the additional requirements with that might be prohibitive for us for, to go to that next, that's next, to that next level. But what we will be prepared to do is to stabilize trauma victims and then help transfer them into a higher level.
And do you expect to have any impact on the clinics?
Which, I'm sorry.
Your, can you say, does that have any impact on the clinics?
We will still care for the patients we're caring for today. Will we expect a financial?
Clinic isn't in danger of disappearing?
No.
Warranted, the others are?
We, and we just opened, or in May, we actually opened a newly renovated clinic in Warranton. So that's another example of where we've invested in the community. So we are still committed to our clinic in Warranton, committed to our clinic in Kennedy Beach, and, and on campus in Seaside.
Well, we thank you very much for making the presentation and good luck. And I really do think, yeah, hoping, I always hope things change or better. And, and I like the idea that we're forming partnerships. That's what we, it's a setup we do. And we have some good team play. It's a partnership, so.
And the partnership with the health district, is why I want to just again call out a strong leadership through the health district. But I think our relationship with the state is, in my, in my.
Okay, thank you very much. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Okay, so next on the agenda, we have a city hall police station update.
Last month's meeting, we were not ready for the weekly status reports. We wanted to go ahead and present that to you now. And that's it. I'll actually go over, start with Jason, I guess. We'll do a schedule with that.
I can do like a, we're scheduled. So police station, the police station, we're just at that point in construction where it starts to actually turn into a building. So we're shedding water, we're starting to do all the, let's say, inside guts of the building. So HVAC is going in and we're starting to lay off the walls. At the, say, hall, we will be pouring the slab this coming Tuesday. So hopefully here soon, it starts to start getting the bones of the building, and hopefully get to that point really quickly where we are starting to transition from construction to finish. So it's just a brief, brief synopsis of what's going on.
And what you're doing on Tuesday, is that weather? Is weather, is it weather dependent?
It is weather dependent, just depends on how, if it does rain, how it rains. We're planning to start, we are doing it early morning for, we did a walk throughout the neighborhood and did a knock on all our neighbors around to let everybody know that we're going to be starting around the six o'clock hour. And then we'll be ending it toward the evening with a little bit of loud noise with assault gun emissions. We just wanted to make sure that, you know, you're out there sleeping, so. But it all depends on the amount of water that we get. So it'll be like a day of decision if it's going to, if it's going to die for us.
And did you have any opposition when you went around?
No, everybody seemed to be, everybody looked really nice about it. So we were just kind of welcoming what was going on, and everybody was.
So what you have in your packet and what is up on the screen there is an elaboration of what you saw last time you were, so similar format. It's the construction costs with the approved G M P. It's where we, firstly, or more specifically for work through the end of July. Last time we were here, we worked through the end of June. We just wrapped up the application for the August work, so probably next. It shows here the billing amount to date, that percentage complete, and then remaining finished. The things that we added to this are the construction contingency usage and the soft cost. And in addition to that, owner contingency usage. So it's a breakdown of those other fees that are outside of the G M P. I won't go over line item by line item, but if there's any questions on anything with the format or any particular item, I'm happy to address it.
I don't know if this was on the last. I don't, I don't know if this was on the last, on the, um, chair report. But the Pacific Power connections both came out of contingency. I'm curious as to why those weren't coming in the budget.
Do you want to start with that one?
Thank you.
Clearly, I, I know the answer.
Yeah, I mean, all of that, a lot of that's unknown until we start in contact with P P N L. And so we can't, that's, that part is a little bit unknown until we get through that process of P P N L and any kind of process through a power company takes a long time. And so we got through the G M P and then upon G M P, finally, we got information back from P P N L, that gave us all the requirements that they needed. So then, once all that was there, that required all of that additional boring and transformers out there, just outside the end line. Yes, ma'am.
Other questions?
No, I appreciate the breakdown and, yeah, what, what it is exactly, we're going to work outside of the contract.
Yes, I'd like, I'd be like the front end of the report tonight. Is there anybody you'd like adding? Subtracted? Good. So the intent is then that each month we'll update this with new items as they get approved for contingency, update the overall numbers, and include that in that monthly packet.
I do have a quick question on the concrete floor. And it might actually more so be for Bruce. But if we're going outside of our organs in order to be able to do that, and I'm wondering why that wasn't taken into account when this was set up? And if anyone else would be afforded that grace if they were building? I have a feeling this was probably not, that they would be asked to spin it up.
As far as the, the first part of your question, I'm trying to recall, it was, I don't know on the builder's side if they had known that it was going to require that kind of a timeframe to be able to go, so we brought it to you when we were aware of it. And. So that's.
That's fair.
Yeah.
It was just. And thank you for going door to door.
Yeah.
I'm sure that, I'm sure everybody will appreciate that.
And it's not really the beginning of the day, it's more the ending of the day that's causing the noise. So we're just trying to pull that back just a little bit. So I think we're trying to do our best to minimize that noise at the beginning as well. So it would just be mostly a pump setup, which is kind of always, so revving up the engine, and then we're going to stage some concrete trucks out there in the parking lot.
Yeah, because you're going to kind of have a continual.
Yeah.
Are you going to use a boat?
Yeah, yeah, so it's, um, it's about a little less than 400 yards of concrete that we're going to be pouring. So I think it's like 360, 350, yeah. So it's quite a bit to pour, and with the cooler temperatures, it's just going to take a little bit longer to set. And we have to get it to a certain point where we can, since it's a slab that's poured on the ground, they have a tendency to crack, and so you cut small lines in the slab to control that crack, cracking. And so we can't do it till the slab gets to a certain setup point. And so that's just going to take a little bit longer with the cooler temperatures.
To the second part of your question, I think that if somebody, you know, a project of the size, that there would be benefits to that, and they were willing to do the kind of things that, doing the going around. I know that they're talking about setting, doing some of the soft one earlier, so that, you know, earlier in the evening, that kind of thing, that if they were, that was the way that it was presented, I would say that it's possible we would consider that. It would depend on some of the other impacts.
Sure.
Can I add, or was there a mechanism in our organs for getting a variance on the noise?
I figured there probably was something like that. I just wanted.
There is a section in that, that much of the lives, would you please, for anyone here? Oh, okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions are coming? Okay, thank you. You're getting done. Hi, hi. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Okay, yes.
Miss Charlie.
Y'all ready?
We're ready, great. Moving forward to the presentation.
Good evening. So, the Parking Gate Report for this summer. We have a total of seven Parking Gates, and you guys probably see them riding around with bikes and their uniforms. And just before we start, just kind of a quick shout out, Class of Works, which is an internship program where we get students from class of county, you know, and they go through all kinds of different employers throughout the county. But it's something we've been doing for the last several years, and it works really well. Because it does, it is part of the community, it makes us more part of the community. The interns come in, they're interested in police work, or just kind of seeing what it's like. But they also have the support of Class of Works, where they have professional support that kind of monitors them throughout the summer in their employment test. So we get feedback from both sides on how they're doing. You know, and they're assigned a mentor at the police department. And, you know, people like Val and the co-enforcement officer Daniel do a great job in being mentors to these people, so do the officers. And it's just really a great program, it's a unique program, and it's just always amazing, year after year, to see, you know, this young person come to us, and you kind of think their first year, okay, they're kind of a brain wreck. But, you know, we have kids who've been with us now, we know they're in college, and, you know, it's just kind of amazing to watch their progress each year as they grow. And this year, we had Danny Calhoun, he was a attorney, he's also staying on, and he's now a cadet of us. He's our one and only police cadet. Isaiah Salinas, he's a attorney, he is now a second year engineering student at O S U. Lindsay McCarthy, she's a attorney, she's finishing up high school and getting ready to go away to college. Nathan, who's been with us for several years now, he just went to work four minutes as a dispatcher. And Samuel Cox, he's a high school student, and he was part of the Class of Works program too. So, and we also had Gaylord Morty, he kind of came in at the end when some of the kids went off to school and he's been working with us for a few weeks. So shifts generally run from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. with a minimum of three Parking Aids working a shift. The number one violation for the summer was improper use of RV spaces. I think we have 18 RV spaces in the city. People are required to park in those when they have an RV. And that seems to be our biggest challenge with parking enforcement. It probably also generates most citations. Yeah, 842 citations written for that violation, June through August.
Bruce, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Is it RVs parked in the wrong place? Or first you ask, do cars park?
Parking in the RV spaces. Things get busy, people's trying to stack through cars in an RV space and in Vancouver you have someone in an RV driving around trying to find a place to park. So, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And I think then they can park where cars park, because the cars would take, I mean, I've heard the conversations, you know, where else are we supposed to park?
Yeah, yeah, and they get a citation for not being in an RV space, so. I think it's by standards due 2025, so you know, you can look at the pie chart there. Paid warning, some that are in collections now, some that were dismissed by the judge, some that are still in dispute. So there were yeah, I can't do math in my head, but it was going to give parking citations for the month of June. July, you can see the numbers increase. 465, paid 167, issued 129 warnings. So the issue tickets are tickets that are just still kind of in the middle that they go into the total account. They haven't fallen into a specific category yet. And August is definitely our busiest month as far as parking citations go. 312 paid, 289 issued, and morning in dispute. You can see most of the information aids, those guys broke the most tickets and the officers had another breakdown, yeah. Isaiah or Samuel had a, wrote 116 tickets. And I see Sylvia has a ticket from January to her. Pardon? I see Sylvia's got one.
I think it, good job, too.
Somebody, who else?
Val one.
Oh, Val one, you're James.
Yeah, well, James got his vehicle cited because he didn't have a placard inside his vehicle, so he got a parking site.
Yeah, thanks.
Again, you can see the numbers go up in July with officers and then August by officers, you know, the information aids writing the most tickets, you know, and writing tickets isn't the only thing that they do. They're out there. In a myriad of ways are helpful with answering questions. Just, yeah. Directing traffic, assisting fire with directing traffic when there's scenes blocking off the streets, especially when there's something down town. So actually I looked yesterday and the total number of tickets through June through August was 2,420 citations that we wrote this past year. And the information aids put in over 2,400 hours. So about a ticket. You know, I think we'll see that the numbers went up significantly from last year to this year and it's because of this. Last year we were writing paper tickets by hand, which you go out, you snap pictures of the violation, you write out the citation, you put in all the information. At the end of your shift, you go in, you create a face file with the pictures in, you process the citations and you turn them in. Then they go next toward City Hall and instead did manual data in for you in yourself to enter any parking citations. So it was very time consuming. This it actually has a printer on the back. You go up, your GPS is all right there, all the film forms, fields are refilled, you snap pictures with it. And then you hit print. It takes less than a minute to write a parking citation. Makes it easy. All the data is in real time, but it's just the cellular phone in here. So when someone goes over to City Hall, they're able to pay the citation right then and there. Yeah, and there's a QR code in the citation, so people are able just to go online and pay their citation or come in the City Hall and then it's paying for itself over the course of the summer. And, you know, looking at state hours just from doing that entry, I think it's probably already paid for itself also. It's, yeah. It's pretty cool.
So the reports that you presented too are also generated?
Generated all from the data right in this, the software, the ways you can break down the data and see different looks at it, you know, and pretty amazing. You guys can show what the most, you know, even by hours, break it down to hours, what's that violation? It'll print out maps throughout the city and showing you know, the areas and during that time of day, we write the most tickets here, here, here. And does chalking for time zones. So you go off, you take a picture and it'll let you know if when you come back, will that vehicle still been in that spot before? It's pretty slick.
So are we going to be able to use a lot of the data that's collected from that over the next couple of years to help public works identify where different signs seem to be in different places or curves need to be painted in different ways or?
Absolutely.
Yeah. If I ask, I'll take it from heaven.
Yeah.
Pretty.
And I'm sure someone with a traffic engineer, they would love this stat. Yeah, you gotta take a look at that, the city planners or whomever. It's.
So you still have some people working?
Yeah, well, I think until the 20th of this month, because they're all heading back to school.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so depending on the weather, you know, we probably still have a few nice weekends where we can use them, but it is what it is.
Well, they've they've broken the pressure that they have in town. Them parking at, we've managed to have a chance to get to a little better. They're, they're great kids.
They really are, yeah, fortunate. Like I said, with working with Class of Works, sometimes we hire people outside, but you know, for the most part, it's been a great partnership.
Well, typically the reason for a ticket being dismissed. Sir?
You know, that's kind of the nice thing about these two now is that the judge has his own access and so he can go in and look you know, when someone wants to dismiss a ticket or writes to the judge and he can kind of go in and look at the facts and everything. You know, I think it's just the discretion of the judge where he looks at it and thinks, okay, that's seems fair and appropriate or no, that probably wasn't a valid reason or a person had a valid reason for why they parked there. Most of them, and I've seen dismissed this year, is somebody driving a rather large vehicle. It's a long bed truck with an extended cab on it and everything else and they park inside of a RV spot and they say, well, my vehicle's over this length and I still got a ticket and you know, it's hard for me to park anywhere else. So now I've seen a lot of those tickets get dismissed this summer.
Are things dismissed for maybe unclear signage or?
No. I think the signage is all pretty good. You know, the RV parking signs are rather long and you have to kind of read them to get them. You know, when you write a citation, you take a picture of the violation with the sign in the violation. So it kind of makes it perfectly clear that it was a bad idea to park there. You know, people are always willing to play the odd game, so.
How many, how many tickets were actually dismissed though, was the minor?
Yeah.
Couple. That were dismissed. Just a few.
Yeah.
But I can see the truck, we have big trucks that'll try and park in our little parking lot. Yeah. So I can understand. An argument.
And a lot of them, you know, that is the judgment, the discretion of the judge.
But I've seen, I've seen them using that. And I was like, I was stopped with the stop sign up here while they were writing tickets, started building it as a part legally parked there. It was like, oh, that's cool.
Any other questions? We'll make sure that you learn, know how much we appreciate it.
No, we'll do it. We'll do it.
And hopefully same matter. I'm surprised they didn't come to the meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, most of them have headed back to school now. This Lindsay and Isaiah were on today, but they've stayed out a little. All right, thank you, everyone.
Okay, that's on the agenda. We have Down Beach Elementary Science and the food pantry discussion. Bruce, could you make the start off?
Thank you. With the next discussion we're going to have probably in a month, we could start discussing what can be elementary, assuming that the council has things they want to talk about at that time. One of the things that is a component was a component of the design that was the most recent design was the food pantry. And because we have like 10 months before will be 10 to 12 months before we'll be turning in the trailers or the modular units. We, at one time, looked to use a modular unit that would be housing either the police department or planning or some of them and then turn that into the food pantry. And because we have the two units there now and some of the, one of them has some size constraints. But we have two units and it's possible that there might be a unit that we could purchase. And if we're going to be doing that, I would like to have an opportunity to work through and not try to acquire something at the last minute. So as we say in the memo today, that we don't need an answer to these things now, but you need to be thinking about it. Their, whatever design we're doing, how does the food pantry fit in? Does the food pantry fit in? Or, you know, how are we going to continue that operation? Because there was a policy decision made during the last project, that the food pantry would be hosted by the city and that it would be on that site at that time. Now, we know that, you know, all those decisions are are in the past and everything's got to be sorted out again. But I just wanted to make sure that this is kind of a linchpin piece that if we're going to do, we need to keep planning and not like you can't just put the a modular there and say, well, that's our food pantry without having circulation around it. So all of those things have to be taken into consideration. We're calling it kind of a linchpin. So if anybody wants to talk about it some now, but just saying that we will be pushing on this as we start having other conversations moving on.
Okay, good luck. Start.
So I have like two initial comments about it. The first was from Land Henry, all the surveys that were done through the community and the discussions that were had in the previous council and the discussions deprived is that this is an important part of CBE having this, this located down there. And then the other part, the other comment I have is the 325 that I think we got on Brutus email yesterday, maybe today. About, there was a new responsive question from the, about the $325,000 that is being noted. That's, what's, what's the cost? Do those additional costs that are called out, do you have any idea? The additional costs that are called out in the narrative you have here, the pouring of concrete, the running utilities, all of those additional costs?
We could, there was the cost associated with its foundations and things like that with the last designs where I could talk to the CMGCs. But an off the level has to do with, you know, the design. And I think that probably circulation will have a lot to do with it.
Okay, then I'm just concerned that we're, by having a discussion with the number of $325,000 sitting there on the table, leaves us and the community kind of potentially first the third group when we get two months, three or four months down the road, then it's like, oh, it's actually a million dollars to do whatever. And I don't want to sit in the same situation like you had in CBE initially where there's a number.
Right.
And we're set that this is the number that we've been given and then all of a sudden we're caught in that number.
Right, right. And the number that is provided is for a unit and it doesn't include those other costs, but I can get what the allowance was from the last budget.
So 1325 for the building, 163,000 for the awning. So we're at a half a million dollars.
But I, I think what we need to remember with the awning is that was part of the design of the first project, which we're not going to.
But it was put in the budget. It was approved in this budget as a separate line item away from or the food pantry. I'm not, I'm not opposed to food pantry in absolutely any way. I'm a huge asset to our I have, we got things to be bringing to you guys. Anyway, but I think that once we start talking about, and was, was the food pantry a part of I think the answer is no, but was it a part of that 12 point whatever million dollars for CBE or was it actually a separate project?
It was a.
Okay, thank you, sir. That's what I, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to be clear on that. And I, I agree with Eric. I think we need full transparency by the time the modulars purchased and the awning and then move, tear, the removal of what's there and like putting the modular on there and the concrete and the plumbing and the electricity and all of those things. You're looking at a million. Easy. I mean, Bruce kind of did say that in his email, that we're looking at probably about the same cost to do all those other things, especially considering when we have we're probably going to need a consultant because there may be artifacts under there. Right? So and that, that could be of, you know, that could run $150,000. You just don't know what that cost is. The cost of the modulars in one, with what modulars, what are those, about 2,000 square feet?
Yes.
So.
14.4.
Oh, okay. It's the smaller one and that's the one that's about three or four.
Yes.
So is it feasible for us to come to an agreement on CBE? And if we were able to do that as a community and do this all in tandem, two separate projects, but all the concrete, all the paving, doing everything all at the same time, is that going to save us?
I would say, you know, once we've saved money.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think that's the same thing what we're doing on next Tuesday. We're saving money by doing all of the you know, on one day and not having trucks come back and.
Right, I, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I, I understand. I understand that. But I think with this project, if we can do it all at once and move quickly, because I think there's some money that needs to be accounted for to get the CBE project done.
Well, that's what I would like to talk about is I mean, this conversation does necessitate that we figure out what we're doing, what the cuts and. I've been doing homework with Shadur and Troy, but. I've been doing homework, uh, with, uh, Shadur and Tribe and, uh, and, um, others in town that, uh, uh, would be, uh, affected by whatever decision that we make. And, um, I have some ideas about it, uh, and I know Eric has some ideas about it.
Hmm.
Uh, but, uh, we need to figure out how we can move forward in a public way, uh, so we can make some decisions. So, you know, Eric and I are both like, oh, I have some ideas and I'm, I have some ideas, but, uh, we've kind of informed, but we can't really talk about that, you know, on the porch. Uh, and so.
Those are things we can't control.
Yeah, I, I wanna, uh, I wanna get on with it and, and start moving and figure out what we're doing. Uh, and Eric is right. I wanted to keep the, uh, food pantry there, uh, with the previous project.
Hmm.
Uh, you know, the tribe liked it. I think the tribe was trying to be a good, uh, community member as well as it kind of fitting with their, uh, welcoming mission. But, uh, I just wonder, because I think, honestly, I think we're headed towards a park. Uh, and one of the things that worked for having the food pantry there was the classroom wing essentially provided, uh, privacy, which was one of the key things for them. So they could queue up and, you know, so now if it's gonna be a park, uh, you know, the plan that I started to sketch out could accommodate the food pantry there, but it would just be access from, uh, Beaver Street in AQ, uh, but is that the kind of privacy that's acceptable? And I did, uh, did Barb about it very carefully.
Before, before the ruling.
Yes, before, before we were born, we should not, not talk about stuff together, which still seems absurd.
Yeah.
Uh, but I was asking Barb, you know, do, does the food pantry really wanna stay there? I mean, does it make sense if it's a park, uh, and it no longer has that, uh, privacy that was built in with the other project? Uh, and I, I don't know. I mean, only, only Barb or, uh, people with food pantry could, uh, could weigh in on that. But, uh, I've also wondered about where the portable is sitting now. Is that a better place for privacy? And then maybe we're not dealing with all of these, uh, other additional costs. Um, I don't know. That's, that's my thought that it's.
But then we're not honoring the tribe's vision of having the app makers. And I thought, I think that is very important. Um, you know, and I've been thinking about the privacy thing for a while and seaside bank is right on the highway and you can see every person that goes in there and they snowball.
Uh, I'm not opposed to it. I, in fact, I mean, like I said, the plan that I started to sketch out, uh, accommodates it. But, uh, especially when we start talking about the cost of, uh, what it would take, and then it takes a temporary location, uh, then maybe that's something that we should consider. Uh, and I'm, I'm not sure where. I'm sure naturally it's necessarily honoring the tribe's wishes. I think the tribes, um, the tribe accommodated it, but I'm not sure. It's like, we want food pantry there. Uh, I can't speak for that.
Yeah. Uh. And I can't either, but I think it was a strong, I sensed it was very, was very important to them.
So how would move, moving the food pantry somewhere within that same vicinity represent Nakusen a bigger way than another way where it is now? I, I don't understand.
I'm not sure.
But I, I think Gary was, um, suggesting a food pantry moving to an entirely different.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Moving to where the portable is now, where the police station.
I'm sorry. I'm.
And there's, there's an, there's an area, there's an area to queue cars there that would be private. Um, so, I don't know. Like, again, it wasn't just.
I think that's just as public as Beaver Street. You know, there's like, we're going by.
Yeah, it's the trail that people walk and bike. It's probably the start. It's probably less visible there than.
Uh, so maybe it's just a, a financial consideration. And like I said, I, in the plan I drew up, uh, you know, it could easily accommodate a queue right there and it would just kind of be the queue the opposite direction.
That's all. Maybe you've got the, the sketch that I had drawn up is basically the same thing of 180.
Yes, right. Rather than queuing kind of in the middle of the park, they're queuing in a new parking area, uh, off of Beaver Street. Uh, so I don't know. You know, Eric and I didn't compare notes to see how similar our plans are.
I have a feeling they're very similar.
I think so too, but the question is how can we move this forward? I mean, do we need another advisory committee that, uh, moves this forward? It would have to be an official advisory committee, but I don't see this being a big long process. Like, figure, you know, we get together and, uh, again, you know, serving up a regular advisory committee. I heard every opinion about what we should do and what we shouldn't do and, uh, and we all also, uh, well, the city, uh, and the councillors, uh, who were a part of it, uh, also agreed to a legal settlement where we would abide by the will of the voters as far as, uh, that project goes. So it has to be a substantially different project. Uh, and I think mainly a park is, uh, is probably where we're headed. So I've also thought about, can we, uh, can Eric and I, uh, present some ideas to the Parks Committee? And let them, I'm an Eric, mentioned that he was getting over the parks.
Gonna rush stuff and get some public input from them and then it just didn't wind up in my schedule. I couldn't make it in there.
Maybe that would be a public forum or we could, I mean, where we could go and give some ideas and let the Parks Committee, uh, make the recommendation back to council about the direction we're going. I don't know.
What if we had a joint, uh, parks and city council public meeting? And let you guys present your ideas, because now that new ruling, the two of you can't compare them. It has to be in a public meeting and, um.
Yeah, I think that would be great.
Because I, I, if, you know, you and I sat on that advisory committee and we met many, many times and I, I just, I think we just need to, we need to get as much input as we can. We have to have a lot of input and make a decision and do it.
I basically made a list of every reason, uh, used to deny the plan in the vote.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to answer every one of those in a plan moving forward. So I like that idea of a joint meeting and I would like to think we could get public comment. We could, uh, uh, it'd be nice if there's some structure that we could, or we'd be getting some kind of consensus and being able to move forward so that we can answer some of these questions that are out there.
What would, would it be, where, what's, what's the difference between it just Gary and I attending the parks meeting, I mean, participating and just presenting as aligning them on their agenda as opposed to.
I thought, I thought you'd speak to that a little. Because again, we, we, we can't, the rest of the council cannot be part of that meeting. We can listen to it when it's over, you know? But which, which I do for all the committee meetings, but then we're not a part of the discussion and I mean, that's just kind of my initial thought is that.
And you weren't a part of the discussion too.
I. But that's, well, I, I just, with this new ruling side of, you know, can we go in there and say, I'm not, you know, I'm a person, I'm not a problem? Can you reach your ear and go, I'm so happy? Yeah.
You have, yeah, concerns about it being.
I don't know. Just, yeah, I guess I was just curious if it needed to be like designated council joint session with parks or if it was.
That I, and the only reason I'm saying that is so that Eric thinks that, and, and do it right. But we could, we ask Ashley?
Well, we can, we can ask, it's an interesting point that if the council is there, is their meeting, that kind of takes away the concern about somebody, you know, just passing information, you know, between two people or something. So we can, we can check that.
Well, I'd love to look at a date. We can do that and, uh, start putting some momentum on here. As Deanna mentioned, uh, we've got money, uh, devoted to this project, uh, sitting in reserves right now. I mean, the project I am envisioning could probably be completed with catch on hand, uh, at least very close. How about you?
That's, that's where I was starting to put my mind together.
And it's almost all TLT money, right?
Uh, it would definitely be all TLT money as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, yeah, which is good.
I mean.
Except for the food pantry. Oh, right, yeah.
But.
But, yeah.
Other thoughts? Can we look at dates for a meeting and?
And I just have one more, one more thought about the, the specific agenda item. The, can we, I don't know if, if Barb speaks for the whole food pantry. So if, if there's an idea, if, if we, if we can have a representation when, like when we're discussing this more in depth from the food pantry, at, at least having the Friday meeting, so we can have a back and forth about what's, what's reasonable in terms of, yeah, why was that some stuff?
While in a public forum, what do you like to add or more of your plan?
Sure. I mean, I, I, I can forward my slideshow and thank the, the Jen.
To your full high five too. I.
But, uh, so.
So as your slides aren't in the agenda, you know, the packet, I think talking tonight would be, talking about it would be fine, but to present something that it can, that.
The fact that we've got dual in slide decks.
Oh, yeah, yeah, too, yeah.
We have dual in slide decks, even though they sound like they're probably very similar.
Yeah, so, so if you just gave a general concept of what each of your plans were.
Yeah.
Uh, so I'll start and then you can add, but it sounds like we're on the same idea of, uh, a parking area essentially takes up the footprint of the classroom and the gymnasium, or at least a good portion of that, uh, that includes access in and around to the food pantry. Matt?
So that's close, close to what I had. So what I had drawn up was a smaller parking footprint, something that was essential of the classroom building and that's about it. Um, access between the existing classroom building and the existing quantum head for the entrance. The flow for traffic to the food pantry would go through the parking lot and then exit the north side of the parking lot to go around the existing location where it's at now. And then the quantum, as it stands, um, removing that and rebuilding a two-sided awning where the south side of the building is a set of public restrooms. And then the east wall of it would be set up to accommodate a mural, both on the inside and on the outside. Outside would be reserved for the tribe to tell their story for the site. And then on the inside, we could potentially, um, work with the Canada G Academy and recreate the mural that we have on the classroom building now, but with the, with the same. The awning itself arch in kind of an homage to the quantum head as a stands as the gym to kind of like a call back to that. And this building would be not like an enclosed building, so you don't have to have the staffing time. You don't have to have the insulation, heating, all that stuff. You've had, you've had all those costs out of that structure and that because it's just an open area. Basketball, paper balls, two, two ball very close, so it's generally unless you get storms, you're out of, out of, out of the minor weather situations, but.
Uh, I, I think some of it's similar to what I'm, I've been looking at, but I, I am looking at a parking lot that could accommodate the, uh, fire alarm market number one, which should need to be a specific size. So I talked to Tracy about the size that would need to be. It could accommodate events like birthday, uh, it could accommodate things like Tolena, uh, arts colony, art fair. So we need a certain size to be able to do that. Uh, but it sounds like we've got some very similar ideas and really what we need is a park designer to come in. Uh, and my things, similar to what you were talking about, are covered public areas. So a group picnic shelter, uh, essentially that, um, could be used for community gatherings and be, uh, usable during, uh, you know, enclosed enough that it could be used during, uh, even some pink with weather. Uh, but, uh,
Bruce, if you're saying.
Not, not all the council, not all the enclosed building. Uh, no, it, you know, I do like the educational component of the entire site and, uh, so I've retained some things from the previous plan, the interpretive trail.
That's, that was within, we're going to, we're going to tread along the, along the creek still.
Yeah. Uh, I mean, I kept the plaza, uh, that's on the southeast corner, just because I thought that that was a pretty nice idea. It was kind of part of the trail. Uh, and it's a nice place to be able to do something in the entrance to town. But my plan also calls for major, uh, park restoration. And it's essentially the plan that Deb Duer put together in a white paper for National Park Service. Uh, so it's major restoration of the environment there. It would be planting dozens of trees and, uh, uh, native plants, which would also be part of the interpretive thing. Uh, so it's, you know, an interpretive trail that would not only, uh, be about the historic site and the village, uh, the native village, but it would be about, uh, the environment, history of the site. And, uh, so it sounds like we're.
We're very similar.
Yes, we're very similar. I do have restaurants, I, but I don't, I envisioned them closer, closer to, uh, uh, the estuary. So they would do double duty, uh, that they'd be not that far off of the estuary. But again, I, yeah, I'm not an expert in the space and or where construction could take place. And whatever we do, to your point, we do need a, a, a monitor, uh, because of the archaeological sensitivity of it. So it's whatever we do, I think scraping the buildings, we're probably going to need a monitor for. Uh, but I don't think that's an insurmountable thing.
Well, unfortunately, we've already done, excuse me, already done a lot of surveying. So that was survey, a lot of the surveying, the archeologic, archeological surveying.
And honestly, they have not found much. Some of the ground penetrating radar, uh, kind of had some, some things that, uh, very well could be the subterranean foundations that where they, um, built the kind of lodges that they built that are coupled two or three feet into the ground and then up above. Uh, I had pictured some, uh, picnic shelters. Uh I had pictured some uh picnic shelters, uh like five individual picnic shelters that. Would kind of mimic the five uh native lodges that were there. Anyway, it sounds like we've asked some ideas that it'd be like, well, let's put them in the mix and see when people come up and give it to a board designer and. Uh I mean, I'm certainly like to hear some public comment about all those things too, but it sounds to me like we're. You know. We're we're very similar in the kinds of things that we're thinking.
Yeah, and I I built my idea around the the survey, so I I just essentially took all the surveys that were on the city website from. All the stuff, all other comments and then just pull, okay, what's the most common things that are being referenced, what are these things? And how can I include as much of that stuff as possible while still keeping keeping costs down? So there were obviously a few, a few things that were had that in the original plan worked out, but it hits the majority of what's. What was called out in those in those surveys that had been done previously.
So it sounds like you guys did similar homework.
I think so, I think we're, I I'm guessing like we were both listening at like, oh, here were the objections. Was trying to answer all those objections, we clearly know what people voted down, uh so uh. And I just wanna, I wanna see something happen, I think this is an opportunity to uh honor the historic site and the. Uh the native village and really tell the story of the native people as a uh. As a village culture, you know, because essentially what uh we did as a country uh and as a state was take. Tribes that are not associated with each other and throw them under reservation and they became the uh confederated tribes of. And that's not the story of the native people, the native people is a story about individual autonomous uh villages. And I think we have the perfect opportunity to tell that story on this site.
Do you think it'd be possible to have Doug Doer come to the meeting?
I hope so.
Yeah.
But, you know, I I do think we're gonna need a professional park designer, we've got probably an architect for some of these things, but. Uh you know, Doug told me that he would be out there uh leading the planting and I. You know, my plan for a lot of community involvement as far as involvement in uh in restoring the site and doing the planting and. Uh let's make it a community thing.
One thing that I think we should make a decision on uh before we get too far down the road is a budget. What's our max number? And then and and give that to whomever we're talking with, so they know. And when we're talking to, you know, how to enjoy questions or whatever that is, this is this is where we are, that way the community absolutely know. What our boundary is.
What's number you had in mind?
How much?
So. Really?
Oh, I mean, I I'm amazed.
I mean, for for not building, you know, a new enclosed structure, though I hope that we consider that. Uh. I, the tribe would like to have a place where they can do uh cultural education and I think, well, Betty is sitting in the audience and she would tell us that. We would like to have a place where we can do environmental education and a lot of this could be an outdoor classroom. But I would hope that we could look at maybe the possibility of some kind of indoor outdoor uh but. I think we've got six or seven million in T L T funds that.
We we have a loan we're sitting on for three point three years, something like that, that's left sitting in in the loan that.
And my 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 number includes that uh. So it's probably close to six million if we if we don't start dipping into uh towards an arts fund. Uh but I got.
But that's the capital down the road.
Well, yeah, well, I've got a project, I've got a project of seven or eight million dollars for giving us one amazing. Park educational program uh and I, you know, I'm guessing sometimes things are more expensive and, you know. There's restaurants involved and new infrastructure and things like that, but. But I think we should, I I'm not disagreeing with you that we should, you know, look at what that number is and and. Fit within that budget, I don't know.
I think I think I like the sixth number and we could always go in later. To and put something in so we could have, I'm thinking, public area and then closed space, I mean, I. I'm a big proponent for outdoor school, we don't have that anymore, I feel very blessed that I was able to be a part of that. I think that's important, especially for this area and learning about a culture um.
And also for that site to continue to have a history.
Yeah.
About education.
Yeah.
That's uh.
Because that's one thing that came out in the survey, is that they wanted to honor Camp Beach Elementary School too, I mean, it was a place of.
Well, there, again, I think the the tribe is trying to be. Community member in in every way that they can, but really what I think they want is they want to make sure their story is told directly. So they need to be thoroughly involved in the trail and the uh interpretive stuff that's developed. Uh and I assure them that on my watch that that will absolutely be the case. Uh and then we do build some kind of indoor outdoor covering structure that again, that would be something that uh. They would have some input in and whatever art was on the site and that kind of thing, so.
And I like, I really like the idea of having kids from the academy try and recreate the mural, I think that's a great idea.
So there we've got, we know.
Yeah.
Uh I think we could sit down at a joint meeting and give some feedback on these things and. Uh and make a decision and putting hands on a park designer and they will be the ones to tell us. You know, we're. Yeah, and how big does, how big does the parking lot or keeling area for the food pantry need to be and. Uh and answer all those questions that, you know, it's difficult for us to answer what, I mean, I'm. I'm good with space, but I'm not.
Well, thank you guys for your work, um do you want to talk about next steps?
Yes.
Okay, something, and Ashley, we know about you guys attending the Parks Committee, we need to go over your presentations and options, they get their feedback, allowing you know, once we hear back from her. We have this scheduled uh technically for October seventh, because tonight is gonna be the initial discussion and then you guys can continue continue like from October. Um if you were to go to a Parks Committee meeting, the Parks meeting for this month is September eighteenth and the packet would be going on Thursday. So we're wanting to just let you know.
Is is us going to parks and talking about uh our concepts, if you're actually willing or do you?
No, I think we, I think we should just do a morning session.
Just do the joint session, okay.
I do, I'm fine with that, I can help.
Okay.
With however you guys want to do it. I just think we're, you know, if if.
Maybe it's adding a step, yeah, and I I feel like if we're close, let's make some decisions and. And make something happen here.
So are you guys good with having that joint meeting on October seventh?
Well, don't we have other items on the agenda?
You have a lot less on October seventh than you do on the fourteenth, so um or we can push it into November.
How many items are on the seventh?
So on the seventh, we have one, two, three, four, five, six. One of them could be a big one, the other ones are very small, uh because that would be the wide group discussion. Uh on the fourteenth, I've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
See, I would I would really like to have a dedicated meeting where we can have public comments and.
And actually an open discussion.
Yeah.
Beginning of the meeting, but kind of have a forum with the, in a public meeting with both groups.
Yeah.
And we presented, and we presented at a town hall type meeting.
That would still have to be, that would be the format, but it would still be a public meeting, right, oh, yeah, yeah.
So I'll send out a kind of Google form of potential dates that the chamber call was available on October. And then get your guys' feedback on dates and we'll see what we're starting with.
I'd really be stretched to make something happen sooner rather than later, I just.
Uh but should we also survey the Parks Committee, are we just expecting them with their feedback?
It's up to you, um the more people you include, the less likely you are to find. It's up to you guys.
Well, I guess start with City Council, we'll.
Well, maybe you guys don't have a lot of free data, possibly more, we can have parks as their games and they know of that.
It'd be nice if they, that would be an agenda item for their September, if we could pick a date. If we could pick a date for the potential meeting and make a discussion of their.
I do know you said that because that's so, because we can always amend our packet, I just don't know at least is that, okay, so.
When when's your coffee with sponsors?
Five minutes, the council is September twenty-four.
Okay, so we know to back for that.
Yeah.
I thought you said, I wonder why Mark's leaving.
I thought you said it was ten, ten days.
He left the night after me, or he left that next morning. So what I was reading was. The spread.
But you should back in the next four home days.
Yeah.
Before the parks.
Yeah.
So I'll send out the Google form, we can get the information and then uh give it to the Parks Committee and we can just, oh, we can all share the. Aaron and Trevor and just say, hey, this is what we want to give you guys, it'll be linked, we can amend the package or include that. I'll sort of put it as an item discussion and then we'll just pass the data into the packet later.
Okay.
And then we should have information from Lisa, they can select a date on the eighteen and then um.
But I know she's not checking her city, you know, on her chair.
I just think you should do it when she comes in.
Can I make a question? No, if you didn't get it, that's the the answer is, um you might want to, I might be misunderstanding, you might want to have the meeting in the evening. You think you'd get better attendance from the public as opposed to an in-living morning meeting from?
Oh, that's, no, I think you'll see.
Okay, all right, I thought we were talking about going to the.
No.
All right, good.
I can do it, yeah. And hopefully they're they're uh willing to do that, it's a good, great prism, I'm sure, yeah.
Good.
Okay, anything else anybody wants to say about that?
No, I'm glad we, we're glad we had this up.
Yeah, yeah, and so I do need to throw in, I'm still disappointed with the middle of Thursday, but I just want to go on the record for that, but. My quota, older my dead body, I'm just gonna have to change that, so um on the food pantry. I think part of the discussion was for to give, kind of give first that, okay, or. I I don't know, yeah, I think we uh to do that, I think we want to keep it.
No need to, let's just keep it in your mind.
Okay. And you're gonna give us some prices?
Some numbers on some numbers.
Yes.
Foundation and utilities and stuff.
And we'd like to want, we have over here, add no foundation, guys.
But if we're moving in a world, we still have to put a new foundation, yeah.
Well, it took me with city council.
I bet you, yeah.
And what's that, I wonder what that will like, with I mean, larger being placed in that zone.
That's in the zone over here.
Well, it's located in the in the um, even flood map, so over there, that's not, it's located in the flood map here.
I still wanted to say that as a um citizen, I would like food pantry, this as a member of the food pantry. Just myself, I would like to keep it at that foundation, I agree, unless it's just perfect if we expect.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with that, but there could be some costs that we aren't aware of.
Right, for the city, yeah, so it'd be good to know. So we need to make a strong decision, but.
So anyway, I'm gonna take off food pantry to the D for October seventh, but we're gonna be accepting a special week, had a day two determined, correct?
Right, um, yeah.
Okay, anything else on that topic? Okay, somebody have anything for good and bad order? Or Lisa?
I have, I just have one thing and I don't know if this is, I I have a place to say anything, but there in Midtown, there's the twin buildings. They both have temporary signs up, but they've had up and their permanent signage is in.
What building?
The twin buildings behind Pelican. Where the um. There are two little houses or the two little office buildings.
Oh, oh, it's important, yeah, oh, it's a temporary sign?
Yeah, they still have temporary signs up, I mean, they have their regular signs up, so it's probably time for those to.
I'll be checking.
Oh, you mean you have both?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, they probably just didn't.
And the the weather's gonna take care of them, anyway, so we might as well salvage what, because they're nice one.
Okay, so get that done.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.